So we're at seven o'clock, we'll get started with the meeting with the pledge. Pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Alright, so we have a kind of a full agenda today, but we're gonna make sure to start with the minutes, which will be approving for both May as well as June's meeting. So I have a motion to approve the meetings for the minutes from May's meeting.
I will.
Second, second, for May. And then also a motion to approve minutes from the June special meeting.
I'll make a motion to approve. I can't because I'm just a parent.
That's right. I'll look at it in a second. Alright, so we have approval for the minutes for May as well as June. A couple of just housekeeping things, so Michelle's asked me to remind everybody that if you do speak today, make sure to say your name so it can be captured for the meeting minutes for future rules. And so also a request in terms of the cadence for meeting today, to hear from the lot line adjustment applicant for 64 Downer Street first. So if you want to step forward and explain exactly what you'd like to share with us.
John Thomas, 64 Downer Street. Just trying to get a lot line change for a small portion of land that we would be selling to our neighbor.
And do you want to just give a little bit of context to like?
Size wise, it's 13 feet by 7 people. .0008 feet.
So this is one, Jamie, I'm actually kinda curious to kinda get your feedback here.
Yeah, I don't know, because I'm listening right now, so here we go.
I was thinking that, I haven't had a lot line adjustment come before because it's very, very small. And I went and drove past the lot today, so it looks, instead of the machine looking to kinda square off the driveway.
Exactly.
And I saw a couple of wood posts, which is probably the outline of that. So I guess the question would be?
That's the question. Sorry, so where is the line now and where do you want it?
So the bold line is the line now, the fainter line is the new line, and it's highlighted over here in this section.
Yeah, I'm sure.
So the only question is, I need, we need to find out what the distance is between the house and the lot line. Chris, what we need to do is figure out what the, what the distance is between the house and the lot line, and see what our side yard setback is, because if we're creating a non-conformity, then it would have to go to the zoning board for that purpose. So having just gotten this, I don't know exactly what the, the rules are on that. What we've got as far as a side yard setback? What district are we in? Do we know? Do you know what it is, what your zoning district is?
You are one. I don't know.
But Downer Street. So, yeah. I mean, so that's the gist of it. Like I said, I don't know that we wanna sit and try to figure that out now, but we, we can figure it out.
So that additional information would be needed. And my, my thought with this was that this might live more with the zoning board of appeals, but I wasn't entirely sure when I first saw this, if it needed to come through us at all, or did it go through there? I mean, it's obviously a small change, but just in the end.
If it doesn't need a variance, it wouldn't have to go to the ZVA.
Right, right.
But if it made it either lot non-conforming, then you need a variance, is that the rule?
Correct, correct. So the other lot clearly is not non-conforming, because it's the same as it was, but does throwing out that little parcel cause that side yard setback? And that's not saying that he wouldn't get the variance and can't do it. I just don't know the answer, and I don't know the distance. So, I'm gonna say two things. We're gonna try to find out what the distance is to the side yard, because that's the new side yard. And then if it's? So we'll have to look at that. And then, then we'll be able to give you an answer. If, otherwise, with the lot line adjustment, it would, it's something, if it's something that can be handled here, we'll handle it here. If not, it'll have to, we'll send it off to the ZVA.
So the distance that we're looking for is the size of 64 Downer, the distance from that wall to the new proposed lot line?
Correct.
And it kind of, because it's angling in, I guess we'd kinda need to know it throughout the extent.
Right, at the closest point. Yep. So if you can do that, and then we'll try to have, have some answers for you and send you off to ZVA if that's good.
And do you know, we don't know what it is on, like?
I mean, I, I'll, I'll look it up too. Didn't get this till just now, so.
Oh, it's fine.
Yep. It's not, not terribly difficult to do, but just, it's something that's on our list. Yep. If you can get that measurement and I'll, I'll do the other, then we'll know the answer. Okay?
Thank you.
Thank you.
So just get the measurement come back, or schedule it to come back?
Get the measurement, send it to Michelle.
Okay.
And then we'll talk internally about it.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
So, we have whole businesses, which is from 19 Phillips Street, so that's one of the four.
Alright, members of the planning board, Christian Freeman from Caplenger Freeman Associates, here representing your benchmark development. The project you see here, Baldwin's Well Housing, is at 19 Phillips Street. It's 15 and a half acres, and we have, at this point, undergone the PDD track, which means we've gone before the building board and received a referral to be here. We've had preliminary official meetings, so temperature checks before we got here. And the proposed development you see here has had some changes since our initial submission, not the one that you're looking at, this is the same plan. So we're all talking about the same plan here. This is 176 units, 1.5 parking stalls per unit, and one thing you'll notice we did do is we backed off our larger unit. So all the sizes of the architecture have essentially shifted down. So we initially had, was a 22 unit, a 12 unit, and an eight unit. And now we're switching that, and we think it's a little more neighborhood friendly and in scale with context, we go with a 12, eight, and four. Those units have changed around a little bit in order to respond with the grade change that is sort of ubiquitous on the site. The way that it lays out, there's currently an upper elevation, a lower elevation, and a, a gorge in between. So there's sort of two hills, and then a large swale that cuts through. So that sort of belt that goes east-west across the site, that's, that represents that large gorge or swale, and so we're not touching that. The proposed development would have two accesses off Pine and Phillips, and setbacks would be based off of the P2 Development Standard, which is our, our neighboring development. We understand we're PDD, so we could work through that, but we wanted to respect our neighbors and adhere to similar setbacks and requirements as them. Care will be taken to buffer all our neighbors. And other than that, I guess maybe I'll just go through sort of what we were after from our last unofficial submission. So we had sort of laid out some, some units on there, thought about roads, and didn't really put a pint of paper and sharpen it to determine how it was gonna work with grading and things like that. We've worked it through, and as you'll see with the architecture, we've started responding to those major changes in topography and how we can integrate our design into it without it being an abrupt, you know, scary skyscape around the site. So that's sort of the things that we've developed in the last iteration. We've added sidewalks, we've added trees. Those, the tree plantings will definitely, you know, become mortified along with a full-scale planting plan once we get further along in the design. And let's see what else I have for notes. As you know, the goal of the development is, is to sort of fit in the missing middle type of housing. So we're thinking about younger professionals, freeing up larger homes, so if the kids are gone, or workforce housing. So it's, it's sort of an in-the-middle sort of market we're looking to tap into. The county definitely would say that we need this, the state would say we need this. I think I will leave you there for questions, comments, and concerns.
So these would be market rate, is what you're looking for from these properties?
And remind me again how many stories the buildings are, Mabs?
So we have a mix, and so if you flip through here, the, so the tallest buildings would be sort of two on one, three on the other, but the way that the roofing and the gables work, we've, we've worked through it. So if you go to the page, geez, I don't know if this is on. It's, V unit is the, is the unit that's the largest, that's our 12. So when you face it, it's gonna look like a large house with two stories, but then there would be walls on each side, little knee walls, and like, that'll be on the, I'll point to the plane, right here. So here, you're on the upper side, there's a thin wall here, so this wall you're facing it would be two stories. When you're over here, it'll be three. So this side is like the lower side, it's three, and then it's the same over here, so two, two side, three side, two side, three side, and then those are, those are two-story.
So no more than three?
Correct.
I'm glad to see this in a larger building, because when I was looking at it on the computer it was very small, it was kinda hard to flush out exactly what you guys had for a layout. Couple thoughts, I originally saw this, there's a lot of, to the sidewalks throughout, but you know sidewalks heading down to either Oneida or to 60 Rose, so I think that would be something we would afford and go to see. Be the continuation sidewalks to those streets, other than Phillips. So it leads to Oneida, I'm sure.
Yeah, yeah.
Probably get more people going to Oneida.
Well, it's not to say there aren't plenty of traffic, foot traffic on Phillips.
And then your parking count?
1.5.
1.5.
Yeah, we're, we're actually over that because we're trying to sort of create, you know, a community. So this R building here, we're calling like a recreational building, we don't have a footprint for that yet, or a, or a real design, but we're imagining it's a small, you know, sort of recreational community center for the people of these houses. So you have like a playground, a pergola, you know, a small kitchenette area, so people could do maybe birthday parties, small things like that. But it'd be for this development, so we have extra spaces for those. And so, you know, if people are having their eight little kids' birthday or something, they can, you know, kinda drive over, and then a couple of their friends and family can come in and do that. I think we have an extra 12 spaces for that.
No covered parking?
No covered parking, no.
One of the things that just jumped out to me about the parking was really just the 3A buildings that are in the kind of lower red quarter. To me, it felt like maybe it was a slight under-allocation of parking there, but like across the entirety, it felt like you have the right, the right number potentially, but that felt like it could be a little bit like, just because those are all two-bedroom, two-bedroom units, and most of them have five across the block.
Yeah, we can definitely sneak a few spaces there, it's actually sort of on a bridge, so it's trading wise, that would be any trouble.
And I, at first I was thinking, no, if you just put a few more in front of those two, but then I thought, well, if you had to go wider, then you have the scenario where you may have people pulling in headfirst, and the building not blocking the headlights, and then the lights shining into those houses that are on Oneida Street. But maybe in that space to the right of the singular A building, yeah, like maybe there's opportunity there.
Sure.
Yeah, that makes sense.
Do you have the actual setback on those two lower A buildings? I mean, I know we see a minimum of 40.
Yeah.
How close is that?
Let's see. It's over 50 feet, for sure. I don't have a scale with me, but, yeah. You know, maybe we're right on 50 on that corner, the bottom left one.
Okay. And that swell, I mean, that, that's huge when you drive down in the winter, it's, it's huge. What is the plan to do with that?
So we're gonna keep it vegetative as it is, we understand it's an existing major drainage way contextually. It, it sort of acts as a seasonal flow path for water, so we're going to, number one, not add to it. All our storm waters and, all our storm will be handled on our own basis, so we're not going to cause any problems or add to problems. That's item A, underline, so it's stamped in. Number two, we, we do need to cross it, so we create a culvert, and that would not just be like a little six, six-inch situation, we don't want to create a straw where you have an ocean on one side and a puddle on the other. So we wanna make sure that when that water comes through, it does flow correctly. We have not gotten into engineering that, but the plan for any impacts to that would be just where this sort of bridge, it's a culvert really, right here, would be, you know, sort of stone and riprap with two or three large pipes under it, just to allow that flow to continue. And then the rest of these spaces down in that area will just continue to be naturalized. And we see that as maybe a little bit of energy to the people who live here, you get some green space, so that this now becomes two smaller areas that are found by, you know, an old mature forest versus one large development with a just kind of a buffer at the property lines, which we'll do anyways as well.
So, just a question on this, on the bottom left, that tight turn, I mean, that, I don't see scale for that either, but that doable for trucks, snowplows, et cetera?
Yeah.
It's like a pretty good curve there for?
It is, it's a 50 scale, so it maybe looks a little tighter than it is, but, yeah, and our, the whole site is accessible for, for fire trucks.
Plowers?
Yep, yeah.
This is your site, right, not public plowing?
Uh, this would be our site, yes. I think we discussed that in preliminary meeting, and they said?
The village didn't wanna?
Yeah, happy to have you not to plow for me.
Because Chuck's there, I'm sure he's looking at that curb, don't he? Pretty good for a plow, huh?
Yeah.
Actually, if I could ask a question, I do have a question on that fight you talked about.
Sure.
And you're gonna put two or three in there?
Yeah.
That's a, they get a lot of water down through there.
Right.
And, and I think they're gonna have to just take a good look at, even with Greg knows, I mean, I'm telling you, it gets a lot of water.
Yeah, yeah, like maybe it's not a pipe, maybe it's like a, I don't know what you'd call it.
We have a little squash pipe down there a little further, but?
Yeah.
That takes it from way back, 600, like saying that it gives its way all down there, but it's, if it's too small, it'll be, it'll be a problem.
Yeah, we will not be undersizing it.
Yeah.
And then you obviously have something on the exterior, because the bigger you get, now you have kids that live here that might find that a cool place to hang out or adventure.
Yeah, that's a good point.
Bigger might be safer than smaller.
Yeah.
That is crazy, you know?
Yeah, it's true.
That is true. You could always net, uh, yeah, yeah, yeah. Next year, all the wheat will be kind of there. Yeah. We'll look at the solutions for that. Yeah, bigger might be better.
There's bigger ones just right where you get off property.
Yeah.
We just put one in, and there's another right by Oneida Street. I'm super gentle, by the way, I'm sorry.
No, no, no.
It's a good point, thank you for bringing that up.
Is there anything here for trash? How are they putting their trash out, or what are you doing with that? Is there an area for the?
It's a good question. I think what we came up with as a design team was utilizing totes, so each, each of the units would have an associated tote in like a fenced-in enclosure area.
Yeah, I mean, that, it'll, it'll come down to the garbage service company and what they're willing to do for us.
So your totes are gonna be on the side of the buildings or something like that? Is that how you're?
Yeah, where we would create screening.
So you have to create, that's, I'm just kind of trying to look to see what your?
The Home Depot way of doing it would be like a little four-foot vinyl, like a white vinyl fence solid, and then you could kind of stack them up behind there, so that when they're unused, they're out of eyesight. We can play with that and come up with a solution that makes sense.
Yeah, because that's something I probably wanna see.
Yeah.
Like actually physically on here.
Yep. That's a good point, great question.
And then I know last time we were, we were here, we were hearing that, or there was just questioning regarding some of the potential trees that could be planted, or just landscaping that could maybe mitigate noise, visibility, if you could just remind us some of what you guys had talked about previously.
Sure, yeah, great point. So one thing that I like to do with planting, it's not necessarily standard, but I think it's a good practice, is to stagger the ages of trees. It's something that arborists used to do 100 years ago, sort of fallen out of favor doing it, I don't really know why, but an example of this would be to plant a tulip tree and an oak tree, and these are just two examples. A tulip tree will sprout out in 15 years, you'll have a very happy mature tree that has full cover, looks like a million bucks, that's great. The faster a tree sprouts out though, the longer, or the shorter its lifespan tends to be. So if you offset that by planting multiple tree species that have different maturity rates, then all of a sudden you're creating a situation that works for 200 years versus looks nice for 50, and then it's terrible. And it's trees, so at best we're talking 25 years here. But I'd rather, you know, let's do this right for our great-grandkids. And then in terms of like smaller planting and buffering, we will definitely get into that at this stage of the development, we just haven't really gotten into the planting because I would say the buildings are on skates a little bit, things are shifting slightly here and there to respond to grades, to make sure the sidewalks make sense, to make sure that our accessible units are located in a way that makes sense. So there's still a little bit of shifting, but when we get into that detail, you'll certainly see planting, we'll put ourselves on the hook for, for nice planting, buffers, privation plantings, all those things.
Yeah, because I don't know, to me, it just looks like a lot, like there's a lot of concrete, like so you would need to break it up with a lot of concrete and stuff, just, I mean, and obviously this is the final version, but to me, it's just like a big, big chunk of concrete.
Yeah, that's fair. So some of these units, and the architectural, and I think we have those two, a couple of the shots are nodding to what we're doing, but the architect did this, not us, he's not the plant guy. So you'll see, this is sort of a, just an example, so here you have your concrete pathways in. The instinct there is to plant, they call those foundation plantings, so all along the face and just bordering those blocks. So at minimum, we'll do that at each, every single unit, so then when you walk into your unit, you're walking into some freshness, because you know you just went from a parking lot, and then you're going to an interior space.
Or something.
Yeah, exactly. Yeah, low stuff, the flowers and this hardware.
And just breaking up all that concrete.
And I guess again, we're not far enough in to talk about street lighting, courtesy lighting, that kind of thing, obviously, but?
Yeah.
These are gonna be more home sets, so there's not gonna be 50-foot poles everywhere.
I think what might be appropriate here, I have to check in with the design team, would be like an acorn-style light, so a post, sort of that single lantern, not on an arm, but on the post itself.
Well, I know it's early, so we're gonna look at that at some point.
And three of the corners and actually the full far-left edge, there seems to be like, is that, I'm guessing that's somewhat of a berm to kind of, is that what is being created, is that just lawn?
Those, so that sort of bluish-greenish, those, these three areas, these are what we're sort of holding as our stormwater facility basins, so it all depends on, what do you call it, sorry, soil testing. So if the testing of the soil is percolation, which means the water goes right into the soil, and these will be dry infiltration basins, and they're just big bowls for when, you know, it's snow is our time, and it's really, really rainy, and it fills up like we've had some of those flash floods in the last couple of weeks. And then it'll percolate through the soil and go down. If we get poor testing, then they'll actually hold water, and what you'll do is you'll have three-to-one slopes, and then what's called a safety bench, so people who maybe fall or tumble in have a place to get their feet, get back up, and it's a standard practice, so that's, that's called like a pocket pond.
So it can potentially hold water?
Correct. And we haven't engineered that yet, so we have no idea of knowing what that is.
No, that's fair, that's?
Yeah.
I'm just curious, because that's a, becomes somewhat of a, like, does that mosquitoes breeding?
I was gonna say, the mosquitoes are bad enough.
Because you're putting it awful close to a lot of, other than back here?
Yeah.
Which is right next to Candlewood Apartments?
Yeah.
That you're putting mosquito breeding?
Certainly are. Yeah, no, we put aerators in them, that's, that's kind of one of the best things you can do to mitigate the mosquitoes, and that's, that's also a standard practice. Other than that, I don't really think there's anything else that the industry is doing right now.
If, if this board sort of is liking this plan, and there, you know, there's some things that have been brought up, I think that the design of stormwater is, is critical pretty much immediately. It is very close to the neighbors, it could be deep, it could be dangerous, there's no, there's no buffer between, the way, I know it's, I know you're holding it, right?
Right.
I know it's not designed, and I know I'm not the engineer, but it seems to me that that's going to be pretty critical to get at right away if we send them in the, in a positive direction, because it may not be the appropriate place for it.
I mean, I'll, I'll be, first, set, that close to, to people, I, I don't find favorable at all. That's, that to me is, you know, you know?
Mosquitoes are already pretty bad, and what if you get on, on sandy water, so? I wouldn't want that in the backyard or something, but?
Yeah, I will say one thing, not to completely defend it, I hear what you're saying. This site is very limited, and it's like flat areas, and you can't really build a stormwater practice into a hillside without doing a subsurface system, which would, you know, later really getting into geotechnical information where you slip out the hill and take the whole thing out to put a system in. But we'll, we'll certainly take a look at that. I think it might be time, if we are headed in a positive direction, to go ahead and do that, the soil testing, and if that's the case, I mean, maybe we're making it out of a mullhill, maybe, maybe it's infiltration after all, and there won't be standing water except in flash floods, where there's water everywhere else anyways. So if that's where we're trending, we could put that on our list.
You look closer there, your drainage is?
It's, it's sand.
Oh, really?
Yeah.
That's good.
You can dig a three-foot hole in five minutes.
Nice. Oh, that means good percolation, so.
So one of the things that we would be asking for, we have to hit a lot of them, a much more detailed like planting plan you might want, but I would say to everything else, I need to go like, maybe go like a 20 scale, so you can really start to see, start to see what's going on. The lighting is definitely something else, like stormwater studies have to be done just because of everything that's gonna come through there. So it's in addition to the onsite stormwater, it'd be offsite, which will be really just a size that, that call for it. And then they gotta refine the, the areas. Walk, you know, walkability, I think is important, I think to Oneida Street, we've got some pathways drawn up that we'll, we'll send them to, you know, for connection-wise, what you guys do. Whether you want something about the Phillips Street, this is another option. The parking that is along the busier roads, the two main entrance roads, if it's gonna stay there, we would like that pushed in five feet, so that you've got a chance to back up and actually see what's going on down the road, and they get a chance to see, not sticking right out to the road. Not, not totally against them, it's not my preferred location for them, but from a safety standpoint, we would ask for something like that, like an additional five feet of depth, just so that the cars can back up and be seen and see, and see what's coming down the road. Parking, I think, is a little lower ratio than we have for the bronze boundary, that still meets code, but again, it's really up to you guys, what, you know, what you think. Hate to overpark something.
I don't think that's enough parking, I mean, if you're trying to do younger professionals or work for? I mean, if you're trying to do gender professionals or work for sales, maybe they probably have two. I mean, if it's just a couple of them, better in unit, they might have two cars because they might need to work in.
Okay, let's take a look at that. In this area here, I will say we are pretty much tapped.
Yeah.
Grading wise, we've shoehorned in everything we can shoehorn. So some of these spaces may just have to be, you know, sort of like hanging out spaces that aren't necessarily as close to these units as we'd like them to be. There's definitely a bank to be had down here. So we'll take a look at that. Do we have a ratio minimum that we need to hit? I can like just add spaces, I hate to come back to six spaces and say that I could have done, you know?
Well, what did you say right now?
We're at 1.5 plus 10 or 12 for the recreation building. So that puts us at, I don't know, 1.6 or something.
Where do you get your recreational building count?
Um, arbitrary. We haven't designed the interiors of it yet, so we don't have the exact usage. So we sort of just had to held 12 spots sort of as a, you know. And it's not, we don't think this is going to be, you know, it's not an arcade, it's not a bar, it's not a restaurant. We don't think this is going to be used all the time. But if kids want to, you know, head down there and, you know, use the pickleball courts or use the pergola or whatever that is, TBD, we haven't designed that yet either. It's a hanging amenity for the people in this community, so.
They should learn how to walk.
Right. I'm there with them. Yeah, it is hilly though, so I know this will, that would, that would be a challenge for maybe some of our more senior junior users.
For young kids.
Yeah.
Would there be more buildings with less units and more buildings? When you had previously proposed, we talked about a lot of coverage being close to 13, 14%. Has that changed significantly with this?
Um, it has, and you know what? I don't think I've updated that 13.5 number, but it's not close to 30. We're not even close to 20. We're going to be under, under that 15, 16. We may load up a couple percentage points, but it's not, it's not close.
And another point from last time was related to the traffic study to be done in partnership with the other group at Baldensville Town Center. I'm just curious if that materialized?
It did.
Okay.
Um, we have that in hand. Do you want to talk to that, Brian, or do you want me to?
You can go ahead and talk.
Sure. So Gordon Stansbury did a traffic study for Bronze and us. It was, it looked at, I want to say, I have the Cliff Notes here. So it looked at potential locations for signals. And what it does is, this is an opinion, it takes hard, fast data of traffic counts on roads and at intersections from, you know, that are on a standard relative to other places across the country. And so he looked at, let's see, eight different sort of types that would warrant a signal. And one of them would be for the example, for example, the peak hour traffic. And what he does is he looks at the number for peak hour in this context, when schools are in session, looking at the worst case scenario for traffic. And he says, based on these numbers, which is data, not an opinion, and says, is a traffic light warranted? And so for, as I said, there's eight conditions. For eight of them, there is not an applicable traffic signal. So they're saying, he's saying it's not applicable. However, the conclusion of his study was, since the numbers are close and it's a growing community, even with our project and Bronze Foundry, we're not tipping, we're not, you know, we're not the piece of rice that tips the scale, but he's just forecasting. He's saying it would be good practice to do an intersection. And that would look like, that would be at this location here, Oneida and East Gen C slash Belgium slash Route 31. So that's where a good intersection would be in his opinion. So that's, this is just a clip from the area. But yeah, that's, that's what came out of the traffic study. So the answer to eight answers was no. But he still said, let's just be safe. We can, we can check the timing of the other lights in the area while we look at putting in a traffic study and, and, and are putting in, if the county or someone put in a traffic light, what that would look like relative to the area. So his, his outcome was yes, but it wasn't definitive yes. It wasn't 100% yes. It wasn't all answers said yes. It was a answer says no, but they're close. So that was the determination of the traffic study, and I'll provide that.
Greg's office is reviewing that, is he reviewing that?
We're, we're almost done reviewing it. We'll have a time to let her out.
Any other feedback from board?
No, but other, the only thing that, your, your one plan and your stormwater plan seem to clash a bit. It's hard to put a tree where they're, unless you're planning putting a tree in the middle of that to, you know, just to, again, to keep, you know, to, you know, people that already exist from
Right.
Nessa having direct line of sight into.
Yep. Yeah, we, we got to get into that and determine how big those actually are, because these may be, these may be supersized.
Yeah, no, that's, you know, but that's, you know, I'm just thinking of neighbors, because this isn't the first proposed plan for this site. And that was a big, you know, thing. Traffic was, that was probably the biggest, you know, thing. But additional is just, they don't want, neighbors don't want to feel encroached upon by.
I understand that. I understand that. We'll take a look at that, for sure.
Yeah, so just to recap, it seems like water retention management priority number one to get us a better understanding of what that might look like. Some scale with the landscaping details, better understand what that would actually look like when it was completed. Some questions around parking and trash, obviously, as well. Anything else from you guys?
Well, we got stormwater on offsite, lighting, you know, want to at least to talk about it, whether it's designed now or, you know, as you go along. Some further detail on the plantings. I think if get more into it when they start figuring out their stormwater and their, you know, grading, you know, size of the stormwater, where do you want to put some berming and that sort of stuff, that'll make a big difference there. And then like I said, eventually it's going to have to be a larger scale drawing so you can see it in more detail.
Yeah.
We should have you go to the fire department, although I don't know if they respond that frequently, but just to make sure that they're okay with everything here. I don't see major issues other than that one raise, which I think it'll still be fine as far as how tight it is.
Are these actual drawings for the, for the designs for the units?
Oh, he's, he's really getting into them. So these are, these are rounding out. They're, they're definitely getting to the right point in terms of.
I will say like, I like the ones with the doormats and stuff better. Like some of these look really boxy to me, like when they're next to each other. I don't know if you would like to add some stone or some more doormats on some of these, but I don't think these look like school, like monopoly boxes when they're like that close together, I feel like.
All right. I'll, I'll bring that forward. I know colors and materials, I don't think are final.
So I'm glad you have a with that part of the development. As far as the elevations go, the, the part of the plan that with regards to architectural that's more baked than, than not is are the floor plans and the square footages. As far as elevations go, it's, it's early on and it's looking for, we haven't gone through and, and coordinated the elevations to each other. What you're looking at right now is actually kind of a sampling of a variety that will get refined and better coordinated, will throw out certain elements. Your feedback is a part of that process. So, so I think there's plenty of time for that part of it to evolve. Right now, what we, the guidance we gave the architect was for just kind of the style and tying into existing styles in Baldensville. But there's, there's plenty of room for us to continue to refine that. And I agree with you, the, the current mix of designs is a mix. And they're disconnected and that kind of thing. So that was really the architect creating different designs for us to react to or respond to. And you to react to and respond to as well.
And I know we have to bake in our process the ARV review, correct? When, since I haven't worked with this board or a board that does that, when typically do design teams go forth and go get that review? Do they do that, you know, sort of towards the end of the site plan or do they do it kind of beforehand? I mean, at this point, our architecture is a little bit further than where I'm at, so.
So because this is all going to be in a PDD document, we'd like to get you there sooner rather than later, because architecture is going to be part of that document.
Okay.
Do we, do we have discretion with the process though? In other words, our preference would be to advance the site civil to the point where all of the items that have been highlighted, we've gotten into the level of detail where, and we satisfied everybody's concerns or objections and have really gotten down to the answers of a lot of the questions that are being asked. And then we would, our preference would be then to actually be left with the final piece is the architectural.
I think we're.
But you can't get out of here before you have.
Yeah. You need the whole.
I reckon, right, I recognize that, right? So for example. What's that?
We're trying to get through as smoothly as possible.
Right.
But, I mean, yeah, you can.
And because I can, because I can easily have my architect catch up, right? I'd rather have, as Christian's describing right now, where the architect's a little bit ahead of the site civil. We always like to do it the other way around, because this is literally site plan approval. And what we don't want to do is have buildings designed that never get built, right? So if we have the architect continue and spend time and dollars on design where for some reason we can't overcome a stormwater issue, we've wasted, you know, so it's really, and I'm happy to hear that, you know, get through the process quickly, I love that. But, and I may be micromanaging that, but if you're amenable to us sequencing it that way, it's our, it's typically our preference.
I don't think they're in tax support.
No. Okay. Okay. Great, great, thank you. Thanks. Anything else?
Can I, can I ask, can someone speak to the process from, from like here going forward? Really kind of getting into the minutia of next steps and how we actually get from where we are today to a, to a final site plan approval?
So remember, it's not, it's not really, it's not site plan approval. It is, but in as much as we're, we're creating a whole new zoning district in the PDD. So we need to have that, that document and that's going to be what we're, what we're going to be approving. And then this is, it's sort of like, this is the plan and here's everything that's in it, right? In words, right? What's here will be in words.
So does it, so does it?
You just get attached to them.
Does that process, does that process work where you're going through and you're creating the PDD? And then as long as we fit within the, what's been drafted as the PDD for this area, as long as we fit within those limitations, then we have basically a compliant project?
No, not really. It's, it's like one and the same. Like the PDD is this.
Okay.
So it needs to be very firmed up.
Right.
As to every, you know, every major detail.
Okay.
Because it is, that is, the project is the PDD.
And, and so does the PDD actually, is that just literally the document, I mean, the name of the document we're getting to?
Right. It'll be called the whatever, street.
We have one in hand, Brian, from a project that we were working with Mike on. I'll say it, it's like a meaty, that's like.
Again, I'm just trying to get that in process.
There's a lot, there's a lot of narrative to it, but there are also the architectural plans and the site plans become part of it.
Right.
So then it, any, almost any change to it requires revisit.
So very detailed, very detail oriented. So when, when this type of process is like coming right along, so that you got it like a soft yap, you would kind of like this, send it over. We will want to talk to the village board again, maybe about halfway through this, the course of the way through this. Make sure that they're on board with it. Because you don't want to start going down a rosy path where everybody's happy and then village board is like, no way. I mean, we need a public hearing. This is an unlisted action, so we don't have to do the secret pollination. But we'll be taking a hard look, obviously, at the secret. And have you filled out your EAF?
Oh, yeah.
Okay. So do that pretty soon.
Who, two questions, sorry to interrupt. Who's lead and then where does the public hearing happen? Here at the village board?
So we're usually on these, we're lead agency, planning board. And then, but it's, it's an uncoordinated review, so they'll be lead agency for their own piece of it.
Okay, okay.
And with regards to the coordination between the planning board and the town board, is the planning board the, the decision maker in that process? Or is the town board?
No, the, the village board is.
Village board.
Village board. I almost think, he was trying to trick me.
I like the town board.
It, it's a coordinated process, but, but this board is kind of leading these details. Because without the details, you're never going to get what you need at the village board.
Right, so, so does.
The PDD.
So does the, does the process in Baldensville work where the, this board will do the work and get to the point where this board will make a recommendation to the village board?
Yes, yes, but we will involve them sooner than that. And they even can actually lead it at some point in time.
Okay. Okay.
We'll invite them, you know, a group for the public hearing, make sure they come. We would do a public hearing at this board and, and there'll be a public hearing at the village board.
Okay. So getting back into the trees and up the floors. Our next steps would be to come back here.
Correct.
With these checklist items that you just gave us, manage and button up and tie it up.
And start looking at a PDD document.
Correct.
Okay.
And Christian, if you want, we'd be happy to do it anytime you want.
Wonderful.
You know, for, for, for all that you want, thoughts, ideas.
Great. So are you, are we doing like a work session now at this time? We could schedule something other.
It's hard for people to make it, but we can do a work session at this time.
Okay.
I think that's been what's worked best for, or some other evening.
Okay. Yeah, we like Zoom and Teams and stuff too, so if that's easier as well, that's fine with us.
And I was thinking more of like, as you get into like your design, your grading, your stormwater.
Yeah.
What you can like that, you know, your offsite, what we need to do for, I mean, for offsite.
Yep.
Things that the board isn't going to want necessarily be involved in every detail of, but, you know, the overall
Yes.
thing they will, but that small technical stuff we have.
No, having, having you guys, you know, weighing on those makes us, then we know which way to walk and run. Okay. I think, I think that covers everything. Thank you for having some checklist comments we can get to. Appreciate you guys, thank you.
Thanks a lot.
Thank you.
More, more now than there have been in the past.
Thank you.
All right. Want to have our next applicant step forward for both island development?
You can have them sit in and learn about modifications, PDDs.
Pretty easel.
I don't need any, this is my hand. Easels, easels. Good evening, James Trach, CHA. We were in front of the village board for two separate meetings for the extension to the PDD for Folbes Island. And then they requested for a modification where we had a public hearing. So everyone knows Folbes Island, hopefully, maybe you don't, so Dunkin' Donuts, you know, down the street. The two apartment buildings that were previously constructed, house was constructed on lot number eight. The center area here was designed for some apartment homes and townhomes over time because of change in regulations and other things, floodways, floodplains and. and how the DEC and Army Corps look at wetlands and the blue line along the edge of the Seneca River really clipped into some of this development. When we built the house on lot number eight, which is on the road, the DEC came out and, you know, said, hey, wetlands moved all the way up the bank. We had to do different things. So in conversations between lawyers, you know, and folks, we came in. Bob Baldwin, as it relates to the village board, as I said, multiple meetings with the village board. And then the referral came to you folks for the modification to the PDD where the existing units that were approved, we're looking to replace those with a 24-unit building. And then have six additional units there. And then the remainder of the single-family lots that we're still working through on some of the permitting components of how much area and how much buffer and what would need to go on for the development. Really lots 10, lot 9, no issue, lot 8 built, you know, lot 7 clips into lot 6 and 5. But we're not changing anything with those lots. We're looking at these areas. So 24 units would be proposed in that building. As I said, six here, we have it at a larger scale. So this is to.
James, let me just go down. Is it only me, guys?
So.
Thanks.
So 24 of you.
Slow down, it's just a little force.
Okay, so.
And, and these are people that haven't seen, haven't been on the board, many of them, when this was passed.
Okay. But a lot of them, and maybe, and I don't know who everyone has, but we've been here, I think, multiple times for different modifications or things relating to this. So I apologize, you know, trying to, you know, keep in, but everyone wants to watch the Mets play the Yankees tonight. Maybe I don't know. Or enjoy the nice weather before, you know, it becomes winter again here. So I'll, I'll go slower. So this project was previously approved multiple years ago. It's out there, we're, we've come in for a modification. We have preliminary information here to start the process because, you know, as it relates to the modification, the village board appears in lockstep with us of modifying the proposed units that we propose here in a 24-unit building with these units, which are very similar to previously approved. And I didn't bring the previously approved plans because I believe people in the village had those, but I can provide those.
So what was on the, on the one there that you.
Right here?
The one that you're changing is this.
This area right here, this, this section. So if I go back to the overall area. So the two large 26-unit buildings currently built, operating right here. A road came in and meandered through.
Yeah.
These were up on the street and there were four or five other smaller buildings. They had four or five unit complexes that worked its way down the street. Instead of doing those based on floodplain and floodway issues, we looked at one 24-unit building, which would allow similar sightlines going out. You know, it's narrower in depth. It's similar structures that have been built by the Alberici. So this is Jay Alberici and Sons. As I said, they, these two buildings, they did Aspen, which is right across from Budweiser. This building would look very similar to a project they're constructing right now at the corner of Barren Buckley. We call it Tree Line Manor. So if you want to see what the look of what we're proposing in terms of the stonework and the color and the architectural feel, instead of us showing a rendering, which we do show in black and white, but we will provide in color, you can see it live in person. Typically, they're buildings when they do that.
Where is that again, James? Where was that?
Corner of Barren Buckley. It's right next to Storitz, or the Storitz that we did, and right behind it's under construction right now. So their typical building is a T-unit, 12 units, 12 units, center core. So if you were out, if you went out there, you would see there is a T, there isn't there because it's typically a 36-unit building. We would cut that off. The center area becomes amenity space for the tenants living in there. So fitness room on the lower level. And then each floor, because you have elevator shafts going up, there would be rooms off in the center core. So a reading room, a sitting room, different things.
Two-story building or three?
Three-story building.
How many units were proposed for there and how many are there now?
30 before, 30 now. So we're staying the same number of parking spaces. We proposed 57 parking spaces around these buildings. And then these buildings would each have a two-car garage. And they would have, you know, the ability to park two in the garage and two in the driveway at each unit. So we, we believe we provide ample parking. We know grading plans and landscape plans, all that stuff that we had previously done for the overall PDD. We would come in and modify. But before, you know, spending the time and effort to do the grading plan and do all that type of stuff, come in and make sure, you know, we did with the village board, that the thoughts and the ideas that we're looking at would be acceptable. The walking trail currently comes up to here and stops. We would continue and then the remaining walking trail would be built, you know, coming along the backside of the building up to Tabor. And then the sidewalk would be constructed along from Tabor down to Woods. But the last village board meeting, there was another developer, I think, that's looking at this land. And they just wanted to work in conjunction with us to make sure the walkability. I don't know, was it Ed O'Hara or Dan or?
Don't know anything about it.
You don't? Okay. So he, he was here and wanted to meet with us separately. So I don't know, but we showed him the plan of how we were connecting the walkability through. So connection point here, connection point out to the sidewalk down the street. Building look, as I said previously, this is a look, we would provide it in color. But you can see the stone. They would have plaqueboard looks, balconies at all levels, peaks. And so we keep with the character of the existing building and the look of what's over there, but just be a little bit less in scale and mass of the buildings over there that were done. You know, have garages internal to them, no garages with these buildings and would be all externally parked. So, so this is what we're here, is to, you know, commence the process with the planning board and the referral back. And then going through the updates if so desired. If not, then we'd have to go back to the village board and say, hey, you wanted us to finish a project in two years. But, you know.
So your extension right now is how long?
Two years.
Two years, okay.
Was at the last public hearing. There was this date, I couldn't quote you, we should ask Bob if you put a date in the resolution. So one of the things that the village should ask us, and I think we've been good to it, is the mowing and the maintaining of that. So like every two weeks, it could be every week now because our mowers get excited to go, just go back and forth. So we're keeping it down, so the neighbors are happy. We appreciate the village when we do clean it up and people decide to put like a couch or a refrigerator out there. They work in conjunction with us to keep it, you know, neat. So that is what we're looking to start. So if there's thoughts, questions, comments, we would provide greater detail for the upcoming meeting. But really wanted to get your thoughts and feedback before we go further.
Several things, I know that we had a few residents who had been to that property. Sorry, I'm pointing at your board now.
Oh, okay.
Who had expressed concerns about delays in the project and maintenance. So it sounds like some of those things have been addressed, which is good to hear.
Yep.
So the village board has been amenable to this specific change already?
Correct.
Okay. And why that makes me, I was kind of curious to find that out is in looking through the original PDE language, and I know we were talking about moving a trail. And we had a lot of discussion about is this a significant or substantial change? And would that cause us to be able to just make a small alteration or completely overhaul the PDD? Where this feels like a substantial change, and it makes me just wonder what that process would need to look like from, you know, moving from 22 apartment homes and eight townhomes to 24 apartments and six apartment homes. So it's a, it's a fairly big shift. And is that something that would require us to have another public hearing?
I don't think we would need a public hearing here, but the village board should have a public hearing on it. So I think what they're, we'd like to see more details. If this is like, you're thinking it's okay, let's see more details. They'll come back here and then we can make a recommendation to the village board.
And the public hearing that we had, the plan, this plan was presented. So when they asked us to come in the first time, it was a presentation of board. And they came back and said, hey, give us the plan that you would like to see and the amount of time that you would need to do it. And then they scheduled the hearing, they had the public hearing, and then they referred us to the planning board. So, and no one spoke in favor or against, that was the only one who spoke in the public.
I still think they would need probably another, they would need another public hearing to adopt.
Yeah.
The revised PDD.
And the updated, more detailed.
Correct, correct.
Correct. Which we don't have a problem in doing. But as I said, we go through and do the grading plan, the lighting plan, the landscape plan, which we've done in the past, so they'll look very similar to what we provided in the past. We just wanted to have the conversation with you as a rate, you know, other things, like we talked with the other folks. You know, fire access, it needs fire code. We have three-sided access lines so they can back up the with aerial apparatus. You know, we have a separation here, which is the same or greater than the adjacent. So we can continue the trees and we got forest main, water main and power lines that, you know, run this corridor. And as I said, we have the sidewalk that's currently installed. And then we would continue the sidewalk along the remainder of the section in front of the. When we did this, so that from a walkability standpoint. Because, you know, when Chuck and I and Johnny Alberici were out there, you know, people walk up and they come to the end of the walk and they either decide to turn around or they meander through the parking lot and then back out. We want to come in, get it done and then move back on to other projects that they have actively going in other municipalities.
Thoughts we want. Yes. Because the current stands, they have no objections, nothing that stands out, you know?
We'll come back with, you know, as I said, full architectural, so you can see the colors. And then I'll actually bring photos or if you guys, this is at the corner of Barren Buckley. You know, work with Greg, you're off this to provide, you know, the necessary updates, you know, in terms of stormwater. The impervious area is fairly similar to what was before. So we'll update the stormwater report, we'll update the lighting plan, landscape plan, grading plan and give you a full set and we'll have it submitted hopefully in time for next month's meeting so we can be back and talk. And really the goal here is if we can get through the process with everyone, this will be the A1 priority. Because it's something that when we met with the village board, we're not going to push or wait on, it's get in and get out. The only thing that would remain would be the single-family lots, is people would want to build. And we deal with really the end of the lots at the end, down near Woods and just some of the, where they call it a wetland bog, we call it part of the river, you know. But wetland scientists and the state and the federal government have changed some of their terminology and what they're looking at. And come January 1st, 2025, it will be a whole new game. So we want to get this done, permitted and built, you know, as quickly as possible.
Yeah, I mean, I think we on board would like to see a little bit more detail just to fully feel good about what.
Yep.
This represents, you know, because it's a kind of a significant change. But I do understand that the PDD's been in place for nine years and those lots have been empty for nine years, right? People just want to see the project be graded, so there's that bit of it to be considered as well.
Yeah, so we appreciate it. And if there's any thoughts, comments or things, but we will be back and we'll give you all the detail that hopefully you need and then we can take steps through the process. Anything you need technically?
I can deal with you several things, like the impervious area drainage, that sort of thing. And then we revisit the access over here, especially in light of what might be coming up. So, you know, figure that out. Other than that, just more detail.
Okay, perfect. And then when we did this previously, and I should know this, we, we, this is a lot, and these are all lots when we did the last round. So the subdivision's all complete and filed, so for the mid-area that we're looking at. So if we got to do, I'll just use this, if we got to do something here, we can work with you and get this squared away for whatever's going on out back. But, you know, if, if we can advance that and if there's other legal fees that need to work with neighboring properties, we can figure that out as well.
I think, I think the main issue was public kind of road and we just needed an access through here.
Okay.
And I didn't have a chance to pull up the, the last apps.
Oh.
That's all, because I just got this today, so.
Okay, no problem. Well, I appreciate it. When's the meeting in August, do you know?
Fourth.
Fourth Tuesday.
It's Tuesday.
27th.
27th.
13th is the Tuesday.
Okay. So we plan on, we will actively push this, so we'll be back in. And that way people can report back to the village board. We're here because they want to know that we're actively moving through the process and getting this done as well. So we appreciate your time. And I'll go slower next time. No, I'll, I'll take a breath, you know?
I see our applicant has returned back from the.
John Thomas, 64 pounder. I ran home and measured it with a tape and then I found a draft from the ground before that shows that it's nine feet. And I looked it up online for the zoning, it says 18 feet total, no less than eight feet on the inside.
So that's. Yeah.
And then I. I just went up there with a tape measuring, measured to the corner of the building, it's nine foot five.
Side yards, each lot shall have two side yards with a total width of not less than 16 feet, amount of which may be less than six feet in width at the front and rear building line. When a lot less than 75 feet in width exists a separate ownership on, date this chapter becomes effective. And the total width of the two lines at the two side yards may be reduced by one foot for each foot of lot width less than 70 feet. We under 70 feet, because that's a lot of mass.
I got 117.
Yeah. But not the total width less than 10 feet. When the total side yard width becomes less than 12 feet, the two side yard shall be of equal width. So.
Wow.
So then we're not there. I mean, I don't, I don't, he's got a problem.
No, that is correct.
Yep.
Okay. So there's not a problem. So the next freshman, is this lot line adjustment have to be here? I don't know the answer to that.
Two, two, so the, the light line is your line that you're doing, that's what.
That would be the new one, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, we adjusted it a little bit from this one because it was going right up close to the fence. So we just kind of moved it back from the fence a little bit.
Oh, I see.
Yeah.
We're going to work on the fly here, people. Looking for my definition of subdivision. And does the lot line adjustment count for what needs to come before this board? Or can it be done administratively is my question. Okay, so we can, we can manage it administratively and I'll work with the office.
Okay.
Okay.
We're all set?
We're good.
Thank you.
Kind of. I'll talk to Michelle.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Have a good night.
Please.
Motion to adjourn?
There's nothing left?
Anything else?
My second. You want to know, she's second. Sorry, Roseanne.
All right.
Andrew, motion.
Any adjournments?
Be kind.
Thanks for the on the fly before there. See you.